Our City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1428. Today is February 5th. It is now 7:00 PM. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
All right, starting at the top of the agenda with a clerk, please call the roll.
Adams, President Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
All right, all council members are present and accounted for. Moving on to item number two on the agenda, which are the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? All right, hearing none. We're going to go on to item number three, which is presentations, and we do not have any tonight. So then we're going to go on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription and comments are limited to five minutes. So if anyone would like to address council, please come to the podium. Yes, sir. You can come right up to the podium and there will be a sign-in sheet up there, and then you can list your name and address, and then you have five minutes. And again, council meetings are all recorded for transcription purposes.
My name is John Dassenbrock. I live on Windcrest Drive. I've got a couple of things I'd like to go over to council. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of the council. Thank you for letting me do this. First thing I want to do, I have only three or four printouts here. Just like other people in the county, I received my property tax bill last month. Taxes went up 72%. I went to the auditor's website to see what houses were selling for in my area. I found some items were higher than I would have expected, but at my age, you know, I'm living in the past. There is one house, a brand-new build. It sold for $312,000, which is, in a lot of cases, more than double other houses in my area. Now, I'm sure that affected my taxes. Then I saw the full-year property tax for that house, $655. That's a lot less than I'm paying. Seems there's a 100% tax abatement on the market improvement of the land for 15 years. Then I looked at the new homes being built on Waycross. Even though there are a lot of houses built, only three of them showed up on the auditor's website. The highest price on that ha- one of the houses is $415,000. They have the same abatement as that 15-year abatement on the other one. These four houses are paying a total of $3,700 in property tax for this year. On average, the tax savings on these four houses is $7,315, $50 a year. That's $110,000 they're each house is saving over 15 years. County auditor told me City of Forest Park granted that abatement. Why are you giving a few people in the city, new residents, this tax abatement when the price of these houses is causing the property tax on others to increase so much?
Well, first, thank you for even attending council and bringing this up, bringing this to our attention. So, as we know, across the county, it's not just specific to southwest Ohio, but every surrounding county as well have seen increases in property tax values. There's a difference between the appraisal of a home and the assessment done by the local government. So in Hamilton County, on average, everyone's property taxes, on average, have gone up 32%, which is, it's a shame, quite honestly. However, in Butler County, home values also increased in the assessment, and their auditor, everyone's, on average, their property taxes went up about 37%. Now, for this particular development, if we're talking about property tax abatements, in order to attract or spur new growth in an area, in order to bring in new income tax revenue, in order to bring in new residents, developers want to come in and purchase land, and there's a fixed cost with that purchase. But in addition to that, in order to still build the scale of the home that they would like to build in that area, they do require some incentive. Now, we can, you know, have a discussion about the time and the length of that incentive, but because the incentive is required to a degree for the developer to build the homes to attract the families, it makes sure that the family who was purchasing the new home, in addition to the fact that we had supply chain issues and the cost of housing is really astronomical, it's giving them a savings to actually come to this area and really not burden them with not only exorbitant mortgage costs, but then a higher property tax cost. That being said, it's still unfortunate that existing residents have to see the increase of their property taxes on the front end while you're living there, but there is still a added benefit that, in addition to having new homes of higher property values, it doesn't, by comparison, increase the value of your home if you were getting ready to sell. Now, the county, actually, we would like to see more come from the county commissioners by way of relief for current property owners and property taxes, but that is a little bit beyond the scope of the City of Forest Park. At the same time, we do have to continue to spur development, because otherwise, no one's going to, they don't want to build here, so that's where the property tax, like, incentives come from.
So you want to have more construction in this city to build up the city?
Yes.
You're getting nothing out of it, except you're hurting the people that have lived here for all these years. You're saying, you know, I mean, I've lived here for 51, 52 years. You know, I've paid, you know, taxes, you know, all these years, except I'm retired now, so. You're hurting those people. If you want to give incentive and have buildings, why don't you have smaller lots, you insist on smaller lots, smaller houses, and give more people an advantage to buy that first house instead of people that can afford a $415,000 house?
Well, that's, that's actually, that's the dynamic. So depending on where the developments are happening, depending on what the zoning is of that particular area, other developments that are coming to the city are also, they are those smaller lots, right? But on, and I guess some of this is a little bit political in nature, the county does have an ability to provide a little bit of the relief to existing property owners as far as it relates to property taxes, but again, that comes from the county auditor who's doing the assessments, right? And the ability for the county to create resources or, I would say, policy initiatives that can create homeowner relief, but we're not seeing that at this level currently. At the same time, I do understand how this is, this is difficult considering the size of this home.
Sure looks, you know, out of place for me.
Right.
Looking at a small house and have enjoyed that house for so many years.
Right.
Also, too, if I may, the county does not set the amount for taxes. I know you're referring specifically to the abatement, but that is what the state does. But you can go to the county, just to kind of piggyback and elaborate a little bit more on Mayor Brown, you can go downtown to the Auditor Treasurer's Office, and you can ask for a audit or file an appeal for your taxes.
I'm planning on putting that stuff together now.
Yes, sir. I encourage you.
The Board of Revision Process.
Thank you, the Board of Revision Process. Thank you so much. I did not quote it correctly. Thank you, Mayor. But we encourage you to do that. That would probably be the most, the fastest way, if there is some opportunity to have the taxes reduced.
I'm planning on putting that stuff, items together now.
Yes, sir. Also, if you'd like, on the 7th of February, which will be this coming Wednesday, you can speak to someone face-to-face if you want to meet them at Corinthian Baptist. From 10:00 to 3:00, there's going to be a representative from that office there.
So you're, county auditor said City of Forest Park is responsible for this. You're telling me, oh, it's the state that's responsible?
No, sir. What I'm telling you is, no, sir, what I'm telling you is that the City of Forest Park has offered tax abatements in an effort to bring in new families, to be able to build new houses, and just to echo what our mayor has already stated that this-
You have to give 15-year abatement on these-
May I go ahead? May I make a comment, please? Mr. John, thank you so, I couldn't remember your last name, but thank you, Mr. John, so much. Can you hear me? Is that better? Okay. Thank you, Mr. John, so much, and you're absolutely, we are hearing you and your concern, and it doesn't just hit you all either. Some of us have some small, tiny houses, too, and we feel it very much so. One of the things that, you know, in making decisions like that, we also had to look at long-term. So while you're looking at a relatively, in the span of a home, having a home built, you've got a fif- you may have that 15-year timeframe, but you've got that house here 50, 60 years. And so all of that money is how we, you know, we're also looking at what we can get, you know, in the long term, not only for our school district, but also in trying to get, of course, benefit for the city as well. And as the mayor had mentioned, the challenge is in having someone to actually build it. And so that's kind of, you know, those are some of the, some of the decisions, but certainly the long-term is what we are, what we are looking at.
15-year quick, $110,000 these people are saving.
But we wouldn't have gotten anything if it was like a 20-year half, I mean, the lot is sitting there, and it's been vacant, and so there's nothing that we would be getting in 30, 40, 50 years into the school district and into the city.
You, I see signs up in Forest Park that says, you know, prospered or, you know-
Position for progress.
Position for progress.
Yes.
You don't think that's going to happen? You know, I believe this city is positioned for progress.
Yeah.
You're saying, you know, you're looking out 30, 40 years. We've got enough, you know, on this.
A quick, just another comment, and thank you for coming, and I think, appreciate the research you did. But in terms of how, how these homes, and the ones you pointed out, the ones that are in the CRA districts, affect other homes in the community, in fact, that they could be raising their property values in general in terms of the, but, you know, we have 18 brand-new homes out of 5,600. So the effect is negligible, quite frankly. When they go through the whole city, that what really is the issue over the last six years is the general increase in values of the community based on the sales of just existing homes that are same, like your home, sale in somewhere else in the community, that square footage, that type of home, that age of home. When the appraisers go through, they're looking on a house-by-house, trying to compare it to other houses of like-kind. And so we've got, you know, like you say, like maybe 5,600 homes, and at some value, going up in value, and then we've got these other 14, 15, 16, 18 homes, how many there are right now, that hit the appraisal. Some of them haven't hit yet because they've just been finished. But those will not statistically change or increase. The fact that you're up 70% has really, quite frankly, nothing to do, or less than, I can't say nothing, very little to do with those particular homes, because the whole, the whole city's getting evaluated, and like-kind homes, you know, you've got 14, 15, 16 homes, but you've got 5,600 homes that also got evaluated, and we've got hundreds, if not thousands, not thousands, but probably several hundred homes that were sold in that timeframe that were existing homes, that those are kind of the numbers that they're looking at, too. So they're not all, yes, they do have an effect, but there's no cause, there's not a real causality here between the two, just so you know.
These houses that are, you know, increasing, you know, looks like on Windcrest, they're going to build about 20 homes down there, and I understand there's going to be another development off of, north of 275, where you're going to do the same thing. These are going to add up, you know, maybe I wouldn't have a 72% increase, but maybe it would have been 50%. It's a lot better than 72.
Probably been 71.
Hey, whatever you say, you know.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, sorry. That was-
I know, and I'm just trying to get, you know, find out what's going on here.
Yeah, I can. You're very correct, and I think the real issue is, why are these numbers up so high? When, whereas yours 70-something percent, when on average, it went up 30-something percent, you know? Those are the kind of things, because there are a lot of folks in this community whose property values went up significantly.
Did they take the whole area of Forest Park, or they go, like subdivision by subdivision if they are?
They go through the whole city, but they're really looking for like-kind homes. So if you've got a buy level, if you've got a ranch in the C-section, or, you know, that's 2,000 square feet, you've got a same house over in H-section, 2,000 square feet, they're going to be pretty much compared, and if one of those sold, they're going to compare that house to a sale. So that's really, it's really the sales of the houses over the last six years that have affected this, more than anything. And we've got, I mean, the property values of, in terms of sales, have gone, you know, significantly, probably doubled in price, you know, even four years ago, just before COVID, the houses were, you know, most of the houses were less than 200,000. Now, you can't find one for hardly less than three, that, even the old houses, for sale, so they're really expensive.
You can find some in my neighborhood.
In general, but they're not for sale.
If I expired my time, or can I ask another question?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay, because they need some help with the city manager on this.
Okay.
And I got my information from the county auditor's website. And, once again, I did not print out enough, so, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I wonder what I can trust on the auditor's website. Test, I've given you a package showing houses made by the same builder. Each packet, I remember A and B. Each one, A, has the same design, same builder, built about the same time. B, same type of houses, same builder and the such. Look at items A1 through A4. Square footage, first floor, 576 square feet, upper floor, 900. Add the two numbers together, it comes up to 1,476 square feet. You look what I have highlighted on A1 through A3, that's what it equals. A4 square footage, same house, shows 1,150 square feet, 326 square feet less. Look at items B1 through B5. First floor, 884 square feet, second floor, upper floor, 560. Adds up to 1,444. Items one, A, or B1 through B3. B4 and 5 square footage, only totals 1,002 square feet. Shortage of 444 square feet, almost half of what their first floor square footage is. B6, I got no idea where they got that information on that. Asked the people at the auditor's office, what was wrong? Why don't these items add up? I don't know, but somebody will look into it. Boy, that's telling me, oh, just go away, I don't want to be bothered. I checked about 25 houses in my area and found it looks, found four errors, 16% errors. Seems a little bit high. You know, and after this, I printed out a bunch of other stuff. Mr. City Manager, I get nowhere being a citizen with these people. Can you give me some help on that, contacting them?
I will gladly do that.
And maybe you could get some extra help from county commissioner. Because hers is one of the houses, as I was going through, I noticed her name. It's on the one, just 444 square feet less. It's B4 in your packet. I'm sure she had nothing to do with this, but I'd sure hate for her to go up for reelection and somebody bring this up. It's an issue of she gets favorable taxes on her property. And I've got other things that I printed out that I just didn't have time to print all kinds of items out, and I didn't have printer ink.
Well, we appreciate you, you doing a lot of this, this research for us.
Whole packet of items that are short on square footage.
In the, in the meantime, though, the issue at hand is that the entire county and, you know, the nation really is seeing a lot of increases on their property, on their property taxes, but-
These people, you should think they're fair, should-
And I, I'm in complete agreement, so, but as it relates to your property in particular, I think-
I'm not complaining about mine.
Well, still, there, there are some mechanisms, there just aren't enough, and that's kind of the argument that I'm making. I think the county does have a responsibility to continue, if everyone across the county is seeing increases, to offer more supports or more initiatives, just a matter of policy change as it, as it relates to the relief that you should be able to get, because, like you said, you've lived here 50 years, and currently, the City of Forest Park doesn't have any such program to help long-term residents with exuberant property tax course, bills. However, the county does have federal dollars that they could be making policy changes, or they could make some type of relief program to that effect.
In this case, I'm just trying to point, the, I'm talking about, not trying to point out errors, that I would hope City Manager, with the help of the county commissioner, might be able to, hey, county, get your act together, you know, auditor's office, get your act together. Here's another one.
I think it's really interesting, Don, is that, can that be cumulative in a way in the adverse with taxes, like by and large throughout the city, if there are that many errors? Is that what that can equate to, or?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I'm assuming they're equating to lower values. Assuming they equate to lower values on your, yes.
Oh, there are, you know, these, that have less, you know, square footage are significantly lower.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the, just the county commissioners is off, is $9,000 lower valuation in the house that's next to me that's, that is the exact same square footage.
Yeah, I think the, I'll bring it up to the county auditor.
I would appreciate it.
And, I mean, I think they have a duty to correct errors, and because there are, the numbers are so staggering, I mean, in terms of the increases, that if there's a systemic problem with the numbers that the appraiser provided, that is affecting individual homeowners, but it's, if there's a lot of wrong entries, I think they need to look at that and reevaluate what those values should have been, or could be, you know.
I can't get through to him, I don't think.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that Forest Park isn't the only place that has these, these issues.
It's not.
Because the same appraiser did the entire, I believe, the same appraiser did the entire county.
Yeah.
And-
Reassessments happen every, every three years, yeah, so it's triennial, so we have more time, but at the same time, to your point, and I do want other residents who might be watching online to know this, that the Board of Revision Process is the mechanism that you go through to see if you can get your property value reassessed by the county, but-
Well, reassessment, yeah, you know, I knew, I know that, like I said, I'm working on it.
Yeah.
I only have a couple more here.
Okay.
Other one's in my neighborhood. Do you believe it sold for $5.8 million?
Oh, my. Okay.
Here's one, sold in 2020. Assess value is $27,000 less than what they paid for. That doesn't seem right.
Okay, well, we will have to confer with the, the Community Development Department. Can you pass that?
They got a good one here for you. City of Forest Park owns some vacant property area. I mean, Forest Ridge, which you don't pay taxes on. Here, if you look at page two and three, you pay $600 in tax on two of these properties.
That's-
Depends on how we own it.
I'd say, it depends, it depends on how we, we own them, but, because a government really doesn't pay taxes to itself.
Do you believe the county auditor?
Yeah, we pay taxes on some properties.
Not-
And then we're, then we apply for a tax abatement through the state, and we have to wait for them to grant that abatement back to us, and then we were saving all of our money back.
To me, it looks awful crazy that you paid it off on-
Well, we can't just not pay, because we'd show up on the delinquent property tax bills, and we don't want to do that.
We need foreclose on you.
Yeah, we don't want to foreclose on ourselves.
Oh, okay, okay, I know, it's-
Well, that's about it. Just, I just have another thing on the number of foreclosures.
All right, well, we do appreciate you bringing this up.
One thing I think I would put out to the people that would be good in their property taxes, rather than getting hit twice a year with these high prices, get the people to take part in the Treasurers' Top Program, where they send, you know, you pay a portion every month, and you, and twice a year, you don't get hit with this monster tax bill. I think that would help an awful lot of people in the city.
Actually, that's a, that's a really good idea.
We need to publicize that, I think we will do that, and it'll be in our next, we'll put that in our newsletter, because that's a real important program.
Yes, it is.
Make sure it's in the next Tax Town Hall as well, because the county treasurer and the county auditor did come last year for our Tax Town Hall, where we had discussions like these, so we would encourage you to come to the, the next Tax Town Hall, because we will be having that again, and we're aiming for, I would say, May, for the next, for the next edition, but we'll have, we'll make sure the county officials come as well, because they did attend last year.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry I took up so much.
You're fine, thanks.
Thank you, we appreciate such thorough research.
Thanks.
The top program. Yeah. It should be on, it should be on the treasurer's website and, and on Jill Schiller's personal and county treasurer's social media.
I saw it today, because I was paying my taxes.
All right, this is still item number four, communications from the public. If there's anyone else who would like to address council on matters of concern to them, now's the time. All right, hearing none, that concludes item number four. Moving on to item number five, which is reports from standing committees. We're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, so much, and thank you so much. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. We are going to be looking for new members still for the Beautification Committee, so if anyone is interested, we are more than happy to have you. We have Arbor Day coming up very, very soon, so please be looking out for the dates for that. Also, too, we need judges for the summer for our Beautification Yard Contest that we have. I went to an appointed mixer at the Greater Cincinnati Foundation. It was a civic leadership mixer, it was amazing, I was happy to be there, excited about some of the ideas that I was able to get and the information, and hopefully be able to use them as part of the progressive agenda as I sit in the seat. In addition to, I wanted to invite everyone on February the 7th to the Everything Hamilton County Engagement that's going to be at Corinthian Church. Every department in Hamilton County will be represented, including the auditor and the treasurer's office. If anyone's interested in coming to that, it's going to be at Corinthian Baptist from 10 to 18. To that, it's going to be at Corinthian Baptist from ten to three. Um, it's something for everyone. If you want to put in a job application for Hamilton County, you can. If you want to see about your child support and or expungement. Um, anything with Hamilton County, you have the option, the opportunity to do that. And then last but not least, um. I don't know necessarily if we need to make this a work session item, but I would like to get a follow-up on the. Request to have conversations with Kroger um to look at what some of those opportunities are for us to leverage and or elevate our relationship with them. And other than that, Mister Mayor, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. I will add that to a work session item because we are supposed to have that follow-up meeting. Uh, moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I don't have a formal report. Uh, we had a. Leader meeting uh hosted by Red Door Church and some pastors over there last uh Wednesday on the thirty-first in the afternoon. And that was part of a larger effort that was born out of our summer uh our summer program with the different faith leaders um. Faith leaders throughout the city. And so we had, we are well represented by the city. We had our. Fire chief there, assistant fire chief and our CRO. Uh, we had a great time talking about certain things that we can do. Uh collectively and how we can leverage our resources and help our students and children throughout the district. And so it went very well. Uh, the next one will be in March. Um, I can give further details on that. Once they become available. And then lastly, the environmental awareness. Every year, they have a program where we help residents with. Reduction in summer scholarships or summer um summer camp costs with different partners like the zoo. That time is now, and so it is a fifty percent off. Uh, discount that you can receive and work if you would like to send your children to the Cincinnati Zoo. Uh, and the great parks of Hamilton County for summer camps. And you can go to forestpark.org and go to the Environmental Awareness tab in order to get that information.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Um. Don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and hello to our residents of the city of Forest Park. I'd like to remind everybody, February is Black History Month. So once again, uh, thank you for those who came before us and ones will be following us in this month. Uh, for standing committees, once again, on the H R committee, we'll be meeting tomorrow on February sixth. To um interview new uh interview residents for open um seats. On some of these um boards and commissions. So once again, I'd like to encourage our public, if you would like to volunteer to be on a border border commission. Uh, please fill out the application and send it to our uh clerk of council, and we'd love to interview. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. I don't have any work session items. Would you like to add any?
Not at this time, sir.
All right, uh, moving on to First Vice Mayor Hope.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I have a report, but I would like to have Wright Gwynn. To attend um the work session. Because I need to find out about the aggregation, why my bill went from three hundred to five hundred dollars in a month. When, you know, you're supposed to be on even billing for for that. I need to find out about that.
All right.
That will complete my. Report inquiry issues.
All right, thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Uh, moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
All right, I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
Yes, I would like to look at board and commi- board and commissions.
Okay. All right, and then moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, good evening and uh thank you, Mister Mayor. I do not have a formal report at this time. But as a uh a follow-up from um last in uh input on the work session. Excuse me, I did speak with uh Scott. On the on the subject of the um uh main water line, shoreline.
Okay.
Uh, there's uh there's some information that he agreed to that he would follow through. Uh, to be engaged with the the newslettering uh that would come out. Uh, but uh we still want to have that. That subject to be uh be referenced. If that's uh if that's possible on the next work session, but don't want to overcrowd it. But I know that that uh that's something that he's working with.
Okay. All right, I will add that to the next work session, so thank you for that.
Yes, and ditto to uh Councilwoman Hope on the uh on the increase. I've had several residents. Contact me over this past week and uh. And had to. Engaged on that subject, so.
Right. Right, so thank you for that. Uh, that concludes item number five, reports from standing committees. Moving on to item number six, which is the Mayor's Report. Um, recently, I um partnered with. The local middle school, Wynwood's Middle Seventh and Eighth. They actually had invited me to their Black History Month kickoff celebration where they had guest speakers and. They actually had um uh Greek letter organizations come and perform and talk about the history of black. Uh, Black Greek Letter Organizations, the Non-Pentahellenic Council, and talk about the history of Black History Month. Um, and as a pilot program, uh, I am launching and with their, you know, with their students and their um art teacher, Mister Simon. Uh, a Black History Month Art Mural Project. Um, so it is going to be a competition for the students. Uh, the launch was uh actually on the last day of January, sort of the thirty-first, but it's going to be a competition with their students. They are to form groups of three to five students. Um, they are to pick a location that they would like to see a mural, and they can draw a mural or they can um list out in detail what they would like to see. And from there, we are going to partner with a local uh or a regional art organization um to bring the students in and have a professional artist. Um, do a mural wherever they uh wherever the location is is decided. So uh I'm going to keep council members abreast. On as this develops, uh proposals from students are going to be due on the twenty-ninth of this month. You know, normally we don't have a twenty-ninth, but it is a lead year, but proposals will be due on the twenty-ninth, so we are going to uh I'm also going to attend the Beautification Commission. Uh, committee meeting and hopefully we can go over the proposals of the students and select a a good location and a potential beautiful mural. Uh, it will probably be one of the city's first murals if I'm not. You know, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, the first mural. Um, and this is will be a pilot and and hopefully um if this is successful or when it's successful, I should say. The next year will um will expand it even more, but I'll keep everyone updated as that continues to develop. Um, and. With that, that concludes my report. But uh I would add to the work session uh a personnel discussion, because I do want updates on. The several city departments that are looking for staff if we have begin um to notify um potential. Um applicants for interviews and um if we're selecting anyone. So a personnel discussion will be added to the work session. And with that, that concludes my report. So that concludes item number six. Moving on to item number seven, which is the City Manager's Report. Uh, Mister Don Jones.
I'll try and keep it short here. Uh, a couple of things, the um from dates, we have the. Uh, spring sports signup that is online. It's ongoing. We still need volunteers, of course, and we still need coaches. If you want to be a part of it, come on out. Sign up, give us a call at City Hall. And become involved in our recreation programs, but the signup is online and the cutoff date is uh the sixteenth of this month. So. Don't miss the cutoff date. Get your kids out and uh get them out to all these recreation and get them for uh spring soccer, baseball and softball. So get them on out, get them get them signed up and don't miss the deadline. Again, it's uh February sixteenth. The uh city is also hosting the um Senior Center is. At our Senior Center, February nineteenth for Black History Month, there'll be a lunch and presentation. I believe that uh they're they um uh would prefer that everyone uh sign up and uh make reservations if you can. And um. That'll be the nineteenth at eleven fifteen at the Senior Center. And uh so we're looking, that'll be a nice program. Uh, we've done it for several years and um it's always a nice program here at the Senior Center. Also, I want to remind folks that um generally solicitation door-to-door is uh forbidden in our city. Uh, for sales or for um other items other than a religious solicitation. But um. We've just become aware of, you know, you'll see that. You have the right to not answer the door. You have the right to put a no soliciting sign out. Um, we have not permitted any so door-to-door solicitation since COVID started, so there's really no one that should be going door-to-door. Um. In particular, we have uh on Facebook, we've just become aware of uh one of these solar companies. That um is using our um logo or for lack of a better term, our our picture of our sign. And the language implies that they're being sponsored or it's a program of the city. The city does not sponsor uh any kind of solar energy program uh through anyone. So it's it's not a city program. Um, so just be aware and spread the word that um, you know, spring's coming. There'll be a lot of solicitors trying to get out and about. And um. And, you know, whether it's someone going door-to-door to, you know, want to want to give you a new roof or it's somebody going door-to-door wanting to sell you something. Change your Duke Energy Bill or whatever. Um, just know that um in general, um, they should not be going door-to-door in our community, so. Uh, unless they get a permit, and I have not authorized any permits again since COVID started. Um. Not that we wouldn't, but in general, we we look, we're pretty skeptical about that. So just be aware that there are folks out there. Um, that uh may be implying that the city is part of their deal and we're not. So if you have any questions about anything or anybody, give us a call here at City Hall. And we'll be glad to help you and we'll be glad to talk to you about it. Um, and let you know whether it's uh, you know, whether or not it's something that that's a scam or something else. So. Um, again, just be aware. That's about it.
Is there anything you can do about those spam calls?
I wish. I wish we could. But uh, no, I wish we could, because I get them all the time, too.
A hundred a day?
Don't even answer my landline.
All right, uh, that concludes item number seven. Uh, moving on to item number eight, which is our other reports. We're going to start with our Law Director, Mister John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I did want to remind you and then advise counsel that I will be absent the next two council meetings. And Elizabeth or Liz, um Volmer Poston will be in my place. Uh, that last name Volmer, you might recognize. He's a former Chief of Police here in Forest Park, so she's quite familiar with our city. Um, a few items, a couple appellate decisions came out regarding uh the Board of Zoning Appeals and how they make their decisions and how. They can confer privately that I've shared with staff. Um, I also assisted the Police Department on a number of items. Uh, there was an issue of placing parking boots on tractor trailers. That's a. Very iffy constitutional issue because that's taking someone's property without due process. So a number of. Cities who have had that type of procedure have now been struck down uh as unconstitutional. I also advised the City Police Department regarding a professional training application. I prepared a resolution that I've shared with our clerk on disposing of unclaimed property. About three or four or five times a year. I file petitions with the common police court so the police department can empty its inventory. This time, it was um it was approved by the court. And it's a matter of getting rid of unwanted or unneeded firearms, and the city works with the firearms dealer to make that happen. So they can be um safeguarded through proper registration or destruction. Um, and that's the purpose. You might see that ordinance maybe next time. It'll have a detailed list, Exhibit A, of exactly the items um I'm talking about. I also uh looked at an issue regarding the policy the Police Department follows for missing children. Um, we have some Forest Park students whose parent does not live in Forest Park, but they live here in the city with a guardian. And I had to clarify how we proceed, always recognizing it's juvenile's best interest that we should be concerned about. And if anything, we shouldn't get into discussions with other police departments on who's in charge. Someone needs to take charge and make sure the children are safe. And then finally, everybody knows about in the last couple of weeks, the governor's veto of a bill being overridden and all the publicity. Interest was the uh gender issue. What was overlooked, and I thought I should bring it up with counsel, in that bill that was vetoed. Cities are prohibited from doing any licensing, taxing fees, anything related to cigarette, tobacco-like products, flavored juices, whatever. That deal with tobacco. They've completely taken that power away from cities. So I thought I should let you know that that was in that bill that got. Uh, the veto was overridden, but it wasn't highly publicized. Uh, that is the end of my report unless there are any questions.
All right, thank you for that, John. Does anyone have any questions for our Law Director?
Elaborate just a brief, a little bit more about the law and.
You can't do anything.
Okay. Not sure. Thank you.
Anything tobacco, tobacco-related, flavored e-cigarettes, anything along that industry. The state has removed all power from cities. So if there's any regulations, it has to come from the state legislative body. All taxes and fees are set by the state legislative body. We just don't have any power to control or regulate those products.
Thank you.
Right, so I just want to reiterate to let residents know that um whether personally or as as this body, if we wanted to try to regulate. Flavored tobacco, the location where they go, their sale, the state has taken that ability away from municipalities. So. You know, you won't hear it from me, but the state actually is must be very in favor of flavored flavored tobacco. Um, and municipalities not being able to protect their children um from things of that nature, especially considering the studies have shown. That they are the most popular amongst uh uh minors.
Mister Mayor, Mister Anderson brought up a good issue that I should also mention. This does not affect our zoning code.
Right, right, okay, good. All right, um. So thank you for that, John. Uh, moving on to our next report is from our Clerk of Council, Mister Kia Bailey.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I like the report that ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-four was posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. Moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. Uh, so I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read ordinances or ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four for the second title.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, just that this ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes. Will the clerk please read ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Forest Park. And the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of West Sharon Road.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, sir. A motion for ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Second. Been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, excuse me. That this ordinance uh gives the uh authority without City Manager and staff to uh establish the agreement for the necessary estimates. And specifications and contracts and constitution plans for the improvement of the uh West Sharon Road. To be submitted to the uh Hamilton County Commission and Engineering uh Board for Approval. With that, I motion for the ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four passes seven zero. Um, that concludes our unfinished business. Moving on to item number ten, which is the new business. Um, is there a motion, Councilmember Hope?
Um, this motion, I would like to table it until I find out more information about it because I'm not even familiar with what. Community reinvestment area housing council is.
Um, it's. Point of order, uh, John, can we take a brief um presentation from the uh our. Community Development Director to explain uh what a community reinvestment area is?
You can.
All right.
That would be part and parcel to an explanation of what is on the table.
In, yeah, in the discussion, okay. So um we're going to hear a presentation from our Community Development Director, Mister Chris Anderson. Explaining uh C R C R A Housing Councils.
Thank you, Mayor.
Expected to, huh?
Um.
I guess so.
Um, I guess so. The CRA is the Community Reinvestment Area. It was brought up in the uh, presentation um, during communications from the public. That's the mechanism um, by which the residential tax abatements are, are done. Um, as part of that law, the state law, um, the local government, the city, is required to appoint a housing council. And the housing council has a very limited and focused um, mission. And that is to, number one, report annually on the status of the tax abatements. That the homeowners who are receiving them are current under taxes, that they are maintaining their properties, um, and that this is benefiting the community. Um, and then secondly, um, they also act as an appeals board uh, for any decisions by the um, housing uh, officer. And the housing officer, I am the housing officer. So um, if I were to um, say deny a tax abatement or do some decision that a, a owner felt was adverse to them, they could appeal to this council. Um, when we first established the community reinvestment area in twenty eighteen, we didn't um, immediately appoint the council because we didn't have any abatements coming forward. That didn't happen until twenty twenty. Um, and at that point, the council um, designated the seven members of the Planning Commission as the Housing Council. And that's how we operated in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. Um, and also last year. Uh, in discussing this with um, our City Manager and, and actually our um, Public Works Director, Scott Potowski, um, they had um, had a different makeup of their um, uh, Housing Council when um, when they were both employed with the City of Huber Heights. And um, at, as we talked about it, it, it made some sense to um, reconstitute this council. Um, the Planning Commission um, is a wonderful group that takes on a lot of different tasks. This is something that comes up once a year. Um, it's not really in their wheelhouse. Um, and by having some uh, staff members along with residents, um, we uh, can, I think, do this more smoothly and um, and just, it, it's something that um, can be done uh, probably in about half the time than um, than we had with the Planning Commission. Just knowing that the Planning Commission, it's been a year since they took the subject up, it needed to be brought back up to speed. So um, and the Planning Commission has plenty to do already. So, that is the reason for the recommendation. Uh, we are hitting the three-year cycle, so um, it's timely as well. So, um, be happy to answer any other questions, but hopefully that gives you an overview.
Okay, you use a terminology "we." Who are the "we" that decided that these are the people that are going to be on, on, on this?
Well, it was probably, we discussed it in terms of staff.
Staff, yeah, and the function of
A function of what it should be doing, and we, we made a determination that obviously council can make a decision one way or the other.
And, and by law, just, you know, Chris and John, if any city has a CRA area, you have to have a housing council by law. And that's that federal law.
For state.
I mean, I get that, but I'm trying to, I, I, I mean
Made by the federal government, right.
Okay, I get all of that. But who decided? Who the people on this were going to be? You said "we," "we" decided. Who is that "we" that decided that these, this is the group of people that's going to be on this um, on this commission, or committee?
I would say the city staff and myself.
As the City Manager, city staff has to have staff members who are in the function of regulating what happens with the construction of housing and involved, and everybody who is on the list, including the City Manager, the City Chief Engineer, the Fire Chief, the Director of Finance, Building and Inspections, and Planning Commission Chairman. These are the exact people who have expertise in the, like, in the field, who you would want on, on such a, a council.
If council wants to, I mean, we could take this up and have the first reading or bring it up.
It's just a motion.
Yeah, oh, it's just a motion, okay. Obviously, we could make changes if we need to.
Well, actually
Discuss it at the next work session.
Well, I actually just don't think that's necessary. I think these are the people who you would want to, to be on a housing council, people who know everything there is as it relates to development of housing and, and the safety, the construction, the, the building codes, the uh, the zoning. These are the exact members that you will want. And to your point, for it to come to the Planning Commission would be quite, it would be quite tedious. It would take a lot longer, and city staff in their function, in their role, the city staff and experts in their field are the people who discuss this anyway when the developments come, so. So would the Vice Mayor be interested in rescinding the, the, the motion to table, and then we have another Councilmember make the motion?
No, I would not.
Well, if there's a, I mean, does anyone have any other questions for, for the Community Development Director?
This is a one, a one-year event that's going to be required to be uh, submitted?
Yeah, the, the um, the council typically meets once a year. And the report to the state that I prepare and that they approve um, is due by March thirty-first.
And any uh, any response for the commission to, to come together, other than this one-year event, would that be based on a resident having a rejection against uh, an abatement that's involved with their property?
Right, if there's, if there's an appeal of, of some action that I've taken, then yes, that would be the other reason to meet.
Okay.
We can speak, we can talk about the next meeting, I mean, at the, at the work session, if it's, if anybody, it's not, it's not something that has to be done today.
I would rather discuss it in a work session.
At the same time, it's still going to come to the same conclusion, but, I mean, if
Not necessarily so. That's your opinion.
As a, as it relates to the motion to table, is there a second?
Second, I don't, second, I, I don't mind it coming to a work session.
All right, is there, is there any further discussion on the motion to table?
No big deal.
Um, and then point of order, just so we're explaining parliamentary procedure, this motion is to table if it passes. So, when I call the, the clerk, or the roll, if you say no, the original motion can be made by another member on council.
Was there a second to the motion?
There was just a second just now, right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I, I was saying this during the discussion, if there's no further discussion, uh, will the
I just thought that anything that we would want to bring up for work session, we were able to do so.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I mean, I didn't, that, 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 whether or not the motion pass, passes or not, we're still able to discuss these things in work session, right?
Yeah, we can discuss it at any point in time, but
We can still discuss in work session.
Yeah. All right, um, and again
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
So, um, council members, um, this topic has been addressed for almost a year, maybe two years. And so, um, so I just want you to know, this is something, this is not something new to us. And so, um, I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Um, again, so the motion to table is on the floor, it's been seconded, we're in discussion, I'm going to call the roll, it's going to be in the affirmative. So a yes vote would mean you are voting to table it. A no vote would mean that the motion to table will be struck down. And then another motion, as it's on the agenda currently, can be made by another council member and seconded, just so everyone is clear on the, the procedure. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to table?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Brown?
No. All right, motion to table passes. Uh, what's the count?
Four, three.
Four, three. Okay, so we're going to table this and discuss it at work session. Uh, and that concludes the new business, so uh, I need a motion to amend the agenda and add items, add as items, uh, B, under new business.
Motion to amend the agenda and add as item B under new business, a motion to convene an executive session. Second.
To discuss
Oh.
Stay, uh, if you would, in your motion, state
State, okay, sure. Um, to discuss confidential business information on an applicant.
And you seconded it? Been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing now, will the clerk uh, call the roll on the motion?
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So at this time, we're going to go into executive session. Um, you are free to stay, but uh, we don't know exactly how long this is going to take. An executive session, no official city business can be uh, voted on by council, but we're discussing confidential um, uh, city business as it relates to um, like, economic development specifically. So we're going to go upstairs to room three B, and then we'll come back, um, and then we'll convene council again, and then we'll adjourn council after we come back from executive session. All right.